Experiencing homelessness or in danger of homelessness, did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Thanks to everyone who came out on this very snowy night.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Smith. I am the Director for the Department of Economic and Community Development. Today, we have with us our consultants, Bill Wazaleski. He is from Malin and Notigan M&amp;L. He is our technical assistance agency, and today he will facilitate our plan that we'll be submitting to HUD by the end of the year. This plan is our Home ARP, funding that we received from HUD. We received $2.9 million. This funding, as Liz mentioned, is for the homelessness, those people who are experiencing homelessness. And so, I believe, I don't know, Renee, you're gonna do a quick?
I would just add that we've been engaged in this process with M&amp;L for the past several months. Engaged in focus groups, interviews, which Bill will go over. But it's been a really illuminating process, I think, hearing from not only community stakeholders, service providers, those at county DHS, but also those who have homelessness as a lived experience. And so, we're really looking forward to what we can do with this money in a really transformational way.
Renee, just, this is separate funding stream from the city's ARP funding?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, so again, thank you, everyone, and we have just a brief PowerPoint overview, just to kind of give you a sense of what the funds are, what they're eligible for, just an overview of the planning process that we went through over the last six to eight months. And then, at the very end, just some general ideas about how the city's thinking about allocating its Home ARP funds. So, and again, we're gonna go over, again, as I said, what Home ARP is. These are funds that are gonna be required for very specific, what they call qualifying populations under the regs, i.e. homelessness and persons that are at risk of homeless. And there's very specific eligible activities that these funds can be used for, so we'll go over those a little bit, and you'll hear what those are. And then, probably the most critical piece is what these unmet needs are that we went through through this process, both a data-driven process as well as a stakeholder-driven process, where we talked to a lot of different folks. And if I don't mention, I want to mention upfront, because I think it's really important. We actually were even lucky enough to have persons with lived experience, persons who were actually homeless at one time, participate in the survey, and I think we had 20, 25, 25 folks take a survey to get input on how we should spend these dollars. And I have to say, we're doing these in about 18 to 20 places across the country, and it was a very unique opportunity. We've only done that in one or two other places, so it's really a credit to the city to be able to get folks to participate in this process.
What do you recall this?
Do you remember, it was one of your home team? Yes, yes, UA, and they just went to the shelters and talked to folks in the shelters and had them. We actually had a physical printed-out survey that was actually online, but we actually, someone at the shelter took the survey, asked the questions, took the survey, sent them to us, and then we put them into Survey Monkey for tabulation and calculation. So, again, as both Renee- And again, I should say that these are a blend of funds that are both like your ESG funds that you get from HUD already and your Home Program funds. So, Home is your affordable housing funds that you provide every year. And then, obviously, your ESG, Emergency Solutions Grant, that's for your shelter operations. So, it's that HUD took these two programs under the American Rescue Plan, kind of blended them together, and came up with Home ARP and gave separate one-time allocations to home entitlement communities across the country. So, in terms of the qualifying populations, and I hope I can read this, I don't bring my glasses today. But, oh, perfect, yeah, I can read this one. So, again, there's four qualifying populations that we really are able to fund, you know, activities that will support these populations. And again, it's for homeless as defined by McKinney-Vento, and McKinney-Vento is a specialized program that authorizes your ESG program in its specific population for persons who are sheltered and homeless or experiencing homelessness. The second qualifying population that's eligible is those fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, or sexual assault, or stalking, and human trafficking. And so, we were able to actually get a really good input about that population locally, because again, it's really hard to get that information. And we had some really good information from the shelters that we spoke to that provided insights into that, so we're really happy to be able to include that. The other population is that these funds could be used for is at-risk of homelessness. So, these are persons that are, again, could be defined under McKinney-Vento, but they could be persons that may experience homelessness, but for a specific incident happens, that they're either in a shelter, you know, become, we talked about it earlier on, about evictions. They could be evicted, and they have no other resources, and they would be, they're basically persons that are at risk of homelessness. And then, other populations who do not qualify under these, and these would be persons requiring services for housing assistance or to prevent the return of homelessness, and those that are at great risk of housing instability. And so, again, these are the populations that these funds can go towards. They're very prescribed and very specific. And again, we can just go through these a little bit more clearly, just to definition of homeless. And so, it has to meet, the qualifying populations have to meet one of these additional resources. So, they have to be an individual or a family who lacks regular and adequate nighttime residence. It could be an individual or family, you know, primarily in a nighttime residence that is, you know, public or private place, not meant for human habitation. It could be an individual or family living in a shelter designed for, to provide temporary living arrangements, so anyone living in shelters currently. It could be someone that's coming out, resides in a shelter, or a place not meant for human habitation, so they're living in not adequate housing. And then, the final term would be, or population would be, an individual or family who is imminently in danger of losing their current housing that they own or rent. So, those are the, again, some further definitions on what these funds can serve. And then, just, oh, this is the second, so not only homeless, but it could be for persons that are at risk of homelessness. And if you're at risk of homeless, I think we talked a little bit about it earlier. It's a person who is, has multiple moves. They've moved a number of times because of economic reasons, two or more times in the last 60 days. They're doubling up living in someone's home or another, another because of economics hardship. They could be living in a hotel or motel situation, where they've provided temporary assistance, and they're living in a hotel or motel. They could be using a single-room occupancy or efficiency apartment that were, it's overcrowded. There's more than two people living in these, in this small area, small unit. And they could be exiting from an institution, which is a publicly funded institution or a system of care, i.e. a jail, or prison, or psychiatric hospital, something like that. So, as I said, these are very prescribed funds, and so there's five eligible activities that the city can provide funding for. And really quickly, as you can see, the production and preservation of affordable rental units. And I think, and we'll get into this about our stakeholder interviews, but that was one of the key things that we heard time and time and time again, that there's just not enough available affordable housing within the city that's adequate. You know, they're either poor condition, or in bad shape, or just not enough. And landlords are increasingly raising rents and having more strict underwriting of people trying to get apartments. And it's just really difficult to get an affordable unit in the city. Tenant-based rental assistance is also eligible, and again, what that is, is basically a rent subsidy. So, you can provide a subsidy to help pay for the rent of a qualifying population. So, if they can only afford maybe 25% of the rent because of their income, this Home ARP could pay 75% the balance difference of the rent on a monthly basis. That is an eligible activity under the Home Program. It's a little bit more liberal here in that there's no time limit. Your regular home funds can only spend, you have to get permanent housing within two years. These, there are no expiration. I will say, I qualify that by saying, all your funds have to be expended and allocated by 2030. It sounds like a long time, but once you get projects going and try to put them together and get them out the door, it doesn't, it's not that long, but you have up until 2030 to spend all these dollars. Another eligible activity, and again, we heard this a lot in our stakeholder conversations, the need for supportive services for persons who are homeless. So, when a person gets put into a unit, they need wraparound supportive services, they call it. You know, help, helping them with either job training, just general, if they have chronic mental illness, all those services that they need to maintain on their medication and maintain house. Basically, any type of service that'll help them maintain their housing, these funds can pay for a portion of those. You can purchase and develop what they call a non-congregate shelter. We didn't hear too much need for that. A non-congregate shelter is basically a shelter, but they have to have individual kind of units, private bathing facilities in each unit of the shelter, as opposed to a common communal kind of shower, like is in a regular shelter, and bathroom facilities. You have to have individual, basically, bathroom and living quarters. And then, the final eligible activity is nonprofit operating and capacity building. And so, what does that mean? If you have certain organizations that are trying to carry out a Home ARP-funded activity or project, you could theoretically provide them additional funds to help that organization be able to implement their project or build capacity. They may not have that specific services that they need to implement the Home ARP-funded project, and you could theoretically provide that organization capacity-building funds and/or nonprofit operating subsidy for that organization. So, in the city of Erie, we looked at, just some general, as I said, we did a deep dive, and we looked through all your HMIS, which is your homeless data provision. We looked at a lot of the HUD data sources that are provided. We got deeper dive reports, your operating of your shelters, you know, how efficient they are. And so, we were able to come up with a look at what your needs are within the city from a data perspective, basically, what your shelters and what your HMIS folks in your continuum of care are saying is needed. And so, when we looked at the numbers and we looked at the incomes, you have about 5,745 or 29% renter households who are extremely low income. And that's a pretty high number, almost 30% in the city. You have about 60% extremely low renter income, renter income households that have a severe cost burden, which is, again, that's a huge number. That totals about 6,000. You have a deficit of affordable units in 6,740 units in the marketplace for rental housing, affordable rental housing. So, again, we heard, the numbers bear out what we heard with the stakeholders saying that there's just not enough affordable units for folks that are very low and extremely low income individuals, and you have a deficit of 6,740 units. And then, you would say, what, you know, what is the maximum income for a four-person extremely low-income household in Erie, in the MSA? And a person needs an income of about $27,750 to be able to afford, basically, a four-person household to afford rent in the city of Erie. So, it's a pretty significant number. And then, affordable, or annual household income needed to afford a two-bedroom rental home in Erie. They need to make about $33,920, so it's a high number of income that they need to get a two-bedroom rental unit in the city. And again, these numbers bear out what we heard with the stakeholders that we talked to.
The shortage of units?
How's that mean? I mean, it's, you know? The shortage of units? So, HUD publishes a data set, and they provide these numbers to us. And there's an updated, I think it's a 2016 to 2018 American Community Survey data. And we use that as a basis to provide, HUD updates those numbers almost on a three-year basis, every three years. And so, we do have, we do have the most recent HUD data that actually provides that number to us. And so, we look at both income and then the availability of units in the marketplace, and that's the number that we come up, the shortage that we come up with. So, these, I don't know if this is the right, these are discussion topics. This looks like one of our presentations from our stakeholder session. Yeah, do we, do you have the next, is this one we printed out? Okay, so I apologize. So, this version of the, this is the presentation that we presented to our stakeholders. We actually have a different presentation for tonight that was, I guess, we didn't upload properly. We apologize. So, I guess what I wanted to do at this point, and not go through discussion topics, because that's what we use, we talk to the stakeholders, but just kind of provide you with what we heard from the stakeholders. And so, I again, apologize that it's not on the screen, but I will go through these. And so, we saw a significant increase in unsheltered homelessness in the course of our analysis, data analysis. So, from the pandemic, basically, this is a pandemic problem. Folks, the increase in homelessness was significant. So, typically, an emergency shelter in the city would expect that a person enters in, gets stabilized within 30 to 45 days. Almost every shelter that we talked to is experiencing 60 to 90 days, so people are extending their stay in shelters within the city, which is exacerbating the homeless population, because they can't get into the shelter system. So, there's a significant increase in those unsheltered populations. There's also an increase in first-time homelessness in the city. And we heard this pretty clearly with the shelters as well, where we're seeing, specifically, the population that they said is dads with children coming to their doors, or families coming to their doors. Mom and dad and kids saying, hey, we, you know, we're displaced through eviction, or lost by job. We have no more place to go. So, that was a pretty interesting input that we received, that there, over the last three years, there's an increase of first-time homelessness. The other one that was shocking to us is a high number of people exiting systems to temporary destinations. So, what does that mean? So, if a person is in a shelter, in an emergency shelter, they get stabilized, they go out into, they're supposed to go into a permanent supportive housing unit, but they're going to temporary destinations, destinations, they're going to someone's family relative. And that's not good, because basically, what happens is they'll stay there for a little bit, but then they become homeless again. So, you're seeing chronic homelessness over and over again. And then, 60% of the extremely low-income renters in the city are experiencing severe cost burden. So, again, you're seeing not only an increase in unsheltered homelessness, but you have a high number of extremely low-income persons that are experiencing cost burden, so they can't find a marketplace, a rental unit or a home in the marketplace that they can afford. So, it's, again, exacerbating this homelessness issue. As I said, we had this survey of persons with lived experience, and we wanted just to provide you, again, with some of the comments that they thought were high priority needs within the city. So, a total of 25 persons took our survey, and 48% of those, 12, indicated affordable housing was their top priority when asked what their top priority was. 40% ranked tenant-based rental assistance as a high priority. And another 56% ranked a non-congregate shelter their lowest priority. So, they're saying, hey, we need permanent housing. We don't want to go to a non-congregate shelter. We want permanent supportive housing. And then, we asked a question about their barriers to housing. And the most cited barriers to housing that they indicated was income affordability, poor quality units, poor rental history in arrears, so rental arrears or utility arrears, and landlord-made barriers. So, landlords either raising the rents significantly higher, you know, or just evictions, just issues that landlord just not accepting a tenant for whatever reason. It's a huge issue.
You have to be able to prove three times your income in order to even qualify. So, that's a big obstacle when our wages are so low.
Correct. Yes, we did hear a lot of that as well. So, with that said, we, you know, with discussions among the providers, with Renee and the mayor, we had come up with a general funding budget. So, I will say that you're not required to come up with specific activities at this point in the process. You're just, you're just required to put together a general budget. How much of your Home ARP funds do you want to allocate to a certain eligible activity? And so, based on the data that we heard, and based on what the needs are within the community that we heard in the data, the city is thinking about, basically, in addition to administration of the program, they want, the city has indicated that they want to allocate at least 2.2 million towards affordable, new affordable housing, rental housing, and another 200,000 towards supportive services. The reason that the support service number is lower, and it's not more of an equal break, is that we were talking with a lot of our stakeholders, and there is a lot of support services around. And I know there's a lot, I think, Hamid Foundation is thinking about a large initiative that they're gonna be providing a lot of these wraparound services. So, it's, there's other sources in the community to provide those support services, but there's not the needed affordable housing. So, that's why the majority of this is being allocated towards affordable, a new affordable rental housing within the marketplace. And again, the non-congregate shelter was not indicated either in the data or the stakeholder input. So, we didn't hear the need for that, and we didn't hear the need for nonprofit operating expenses or nonprofit capacity building either.
Who manages the affordable housing in that scenario?
So, again, the way it would be envisioned is that if council approves this allocation plan, we submit it to HUD at the end of the year, and HUD approves it. The city then controls how that will be allocated and distributed. So, the best way that we would recommend that be done is through an RFP process. So, the city will say to the community, hey, we're gonna issue an RFP. We want to see the development of affordable rental housing units, and they could structure that. We haven't had those conversations yet, but we could structure that. And the idea would be, you know, 2. whatever million is not gonna solve homelessness with the city, but the real smart play would be to try to leverage additional resources. So, the way you do that is to have other, either developers come to the table with resources to help construct, or nonprofit organizations partnering with developers who are gonna bring supportive services, wraparound supportive services. And then, the city would then supplement that with the actual hard cost of construction developed as Home ARP units if other organizations are gonna provide those wraparound supportive services.
So, this, that's all open enough, where there's no plan working in that?
Not yet, not yet. That's an ongoing discussion. Again, the first, the city can't do that until they actually have a HUD-approved plan. And the idea would be, you know, we get this to HUD by the end of the year. I think HUD has 45 days to review and approve your plan. So, February-ish is when you can start thinking about how you want to allocate those and put those out to RFP.
I can't remember the term, but what's the thing that hands is like the only one that we can really give?
Chodo.
Chodo. Is there any chodo restrictions on this?
No, there's no chodo restrictions on that. That was an easing of the regs when HUD put these out. They really want to incentivize and then take down some of those barriers, so you're not required to put a portion of these aside for chodo assistance.
Would there be adaptive reuse of, or could there be adaptive reuse of buildings for?
Sure, sure. You could do rehabilitation, you could do new construction, adaptive reuse, any and all of the above.
Okay, and then, what would be the, I know you have to work with HUD and this, you know, federal guidelines and everything, but like, when might we see like results after an RFP or?
Yeah, that's a great question. This is such a new program, and, you know, HUD does have some general guidance out there about, you know, what they want to see. You know, the city's gonna have to develop policies and procedures. They're gonna have to develop, you know, RFPs. You know, it depends on how quickly the city is willing to start issuing RFPs, or if they have an or if they have an idea of a project that comes to the table between now and then that sounds really good. You know, the city could allocate these funds within six to eight months after they receive approval. And then depending on, you know, how quickly a developer could either rehab or construct. New construction generally takes a year to, you know, thirteen months. Rehab might be quicker. But again, you have till twenty-thirty to allocate these funds and expend these funds. So it would just depend.
In terms of need, I mean, I was going to use a Joe Biden expression, a BFD. Is this, is this a good amount of money to meet the need? Do you know yet or does it?
No.
Okay.
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
Absolutely not. But the idea is, and we're all smart sitting around the table, if we can use these dollars to leverage other private and public resources. So again, I don't know what the city's current ARP plan, regular ARP plan, if you budgeted regular homeless funds for affordable housing as part of that or homeless housing. You know, you could partner monies, you know, these monies with that. The city can use its home dollars to help allocate, incentivize developers. So if a developer comes to the table for, like a hands for a tax credit project, say, hey, we give us a million, two for home dollars for this tax. Okay, yeah, maybe, but will you be able to provide us two or three units of permanent supportive housing units? That would be Home Art eligible as part of this process. So the idea would be, again, it's never going to solve this issue and the gaps in needs, but you should be able to use these to leverage additional resources in the marketplace.
How do you make the people know that this is a hand up and not a hand out?
It's a great question. We talked a lot with support service providers and a lot of those agencies locally have really good programs and are really, and I was encouraged to hear that Hamid is participating at a high level. We, I think what's going on, I don't know this to be a hundred percent true, but I think, you know, that the emergency rooms are filling up with persons that are homeless or potentially at risk of homeless. And if everyone's working together to avoid that and they're providing wraparound support services that provide affordable, wrapped around affordable services, you know, that's really going to help that person, that person become self-sufficient and self-sustaining. And again, I always felt that, you know, transitional housing was the old HUD model in terms of being able to make people successful where you get a person out of a shelter, you give them two years to get stabilized and then get on their feet, get a job, get training skills, get whatever they need to be successful. And then they become able to go into the marketplace and get a rental. And I think this gives you the flexibility to do that that's not currently available to everybody. So I think it's a combination of things to make sure people are successful.
So it's kind of been a pet peeve of mine. It's been twenty-five years of these tie. The John Rahan apartments are beautiful.
Yep.
But they're also multi-generational.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
That's not, we want to build self-esteem to the folks.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
That's my.
Absolutely.
When we, when you say like affordable housing, is there like a definition of affordable housing? Or like with that very person-to-person, can you explain that?
Yes, the standard definition of affordable housing is a person not paying more than thirty percent of their income towards rent or housing cost. So that's the typical standard definition of that. So the idea is to make it sure that, and again, if, that's why this is pretty interesting that you can provide those rental subsidies and those wraparound services that if a person can't afford, they can only, say they, say the rent is a hundred, yeah, five-hundred dollars and they can only afford to pay based on their income, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that difference could be covered by a portion of these proceeds, almost like a voucher.
Well, let's talk realistic rent prices currently in our community. They're right now between nine-hundred and twelve-hundred, so.
We did hear that, we did hear that.
Okay.
Yep, we absolutely heard that and it was shocking to us that it has increased so dramatically. We heard that from the Housing Authority to other agencies within Town Hands indicated that as well, that the increase not just in assisted housing, but also in the private market, it has just increased substantially over the last two, two to three years. And I think it's being exacerbated by, again, evictions. When the eviction moratorium was allowed to lapse after COVID, a lot of landlords said, we're just going to evict folks because we can now get an income, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred dollars more a month just without even trying it at this point.
And then once the renter has the eviction on their record, it's next to impossible to get them in.
Correct, absolutely. Okay, okay, okay. Okay, so here's our allocation plan that we, that I just outlined for you so you can see the actual proposed budget that we're asking council to consider. Again, we, so the proposed eight units of new affordable units, again, we don't know what's going to come to the table. We don't know what's going to arrive. This was a basic calculation that HUD provided in the legislation.
Sorry, you just emailed this to Frank, right? Can you email it to us? I'd rather look at here than up there.
So we figured out what your average rent costs were, what, you know, how much it costs to construct a unit in, and so we really lowballed eight new affordable units. And again, that's kind of, we want to overperform. We feel that you can get way more than that if you're, if you're able to partner with other organizations and leverage these dollars. But we're reporting to HUD as part of the city's caper every year. We want to show that we're either exceeding or greatly exceeding that. So that's just a basic point that we put out there just to, again, not to say we're going to overperform, just a stat or a number that we came up with based on what HUD tells you the calculation should be. And just so you understand too, the other note there, you are limited to fifteen percent of the total grant towards administration. And although that sounds like a huge number, keep in mind that these have to be, you have to twenty-thirty to send, to spend these dollars. But not only that, you have to make sure they remain affordable for a minimum period of affordability of fifteen years. So that's going to require city staff to monitor those projects, making sure they're in compliance. You're going to have to do environmental reviews. You're going to have to do subsidy lending, underwriting. There's a lot of things that go with it. So that sounds like a high number, but it's really not. Is there any questions on the budget now that you can see it?
I just wondered, this plan will come to city council for approval. What else could city council or city workers do? I mean, like, do we need to brand this? Do we need to have a, you know, no, you know what I mean? Like, like the mayor has committed to, you know, trying to erase racism, but do we need to issue, not a proclamation, but a lived by, you know, no person in Erie should be homeless? I don't know. I just wondered if there are any successes in other communities where they make that, and it kind of can get to Ed's point too about, you know, self-sufficiency. Is there a way to, have you seen success stories elsewhere pre-pandemic? That where it's like, we aren't going to, we aren't going to let people be homeless if, if we can help it. I don't know, that might be, sound a little too idealistic, but.
Never hurts, you know, and again, I would defer to Renee and Deborah about how they could do that and the mayor obviously in terms of getting the word out, you know, whether they're doing, you know, some sort of media thing that they're getting the word out about these dollars and really tackling it head-on and just saying, hey, we're really trying to make a dent in the homeless population in Erie. And I think when you start looking at some of the mayor's initiatives that he was telling us about related to some of the, you know, the street outreach that he's proposing and the, and the helping to address the domestic violence issues that are going on by new police officers. I think when you start looking at that holistically and you start trying to stack those together, I think those are all really good things. And if you can get out in front of it and say, hey, this is what we're thinking about collectively as a city and why we want to really address these issues that have been emerging through domestic violence, through homelessness, through street, you know, outreach. And you start trying to paint that picture, it's, it's really, it can really make a difference. Any other questions on the budget?
Do you stay with this or are you, are you done with this?
No, as long, as long as we're rehired by the city to help. We're submitting a proposal Monday and we'd be absolutely happy to provide technical assistance as needed as we do with your other programs, your home program, your CBG program.
And Deb, will he be there at the public hearings?
Yes.
We have two public hearings, correct, coming up? And what are those days?
Yes.
A day and a night one, right?
I will be, I will be at both of those, absolutely.
Are you guys able to provide us with information for what programs are available for the tenant base rental assistance? Since we're not going to be allocating any funds, I would like the community to know where they can access any additional help and funding.
Yeah, so your home dollars, right, can do that?
We have home dollars, but we've never received any applications for tenant-based rental assistance, so.
Ideally, you know, in the marketplace, the Housing Authority has basically both project-based vouchers as well as tenant vouchers. And so to the extent that we're partnering with the Housing Authority and really looking, especially if it's a HUD-funded or a Home Art-funded rental project, to the extent that the Housing Authority is willing to project-based vouchers to specific units so that the subsidy stays in the unit and not with the person, that's a real benefit because whoever's in that unit is going to benefit from that, not never paying more than thirty percent of their income towards, towards housing. And I think we even spoke about this with the Housing Authority and they are willing to work with the city in terms of project-basing vouchers towards Home Art-funded activities, so. I was encouraged by that.
And it strikes me that when you talk about a holistic approach, the City Planner Day for us is moving forward with talking about a Blight Court. And I know Jasmine has talked about the conditions of housing. So it seems to me that you do need that holistic approach. You need to make sure that people aren't forced to live in substandard units. So, right, am I saying that right?
Yeah, and it gets to code enforcement, you know, making sure your code enforcement officers are really doing their job and holding landlords' feet to the fire and all that good stuff. I think it's a mixture of everything.
Deb, is there anything else we need to know from your perspective?
No, but we will have a resolution for your December twenty-first meeting requesting that you approve our plan to submit to HUD. And so once we get that, we'll be able to submit the plan to HUD, so.
And normally, we don't have audience participation at a study session, but we do have former councilwoman Kathy Schoff here. And Kathy had made it her, and still makes it her mission to reach out to those who are homeless. I know Chuck has also worked on this aspect, helping people get into housing. I just wondered if it's okay with everybody. I'm going to ask Kathy Schoff if you had any, anything to add tonight.
No, we don't want to talk.
I just think this is a wonderful start. So I thank Bill for coming up and.
Come on up, Kathy.
Sit there while you're talking.
No, that's okay.
I think this is a wonderful start. We have to start somewhere and this is a wonderful opportunity. I thank Bill for coming up and doing this great presentation and for Renee's work in assisting him in getting him to the different shelters and home program and that. So I'm very excited about this. Yes, it's only two million, almost three, which is wonderful. But it's a start and a needed start, so thank you.
Is there anything else about the, I mean, you have not personally lived the experience, I don't think of being homeless, but you have been with people with that lived experience. Is there anything that was missed in terms of, or anything that stands out to you as, in terms of the lived experience of being homeless?
Actually, a gentleman just came in today and wanted to address the need of more mental health areas, facilities that could be used for all of us here in Erie who, that needed. And I know mental health is a really big issue that's out there for, with people who have homes and people without. But it's great to know that this is coming to fruition with your assistance and voting for this resolution because really it is a needed thing.
Okay, and I'm just going to ask Chuck to do, to make a mention of Our Neighbor's Place as you did at last night's council meeting because you never know who we might be reaching. And boy, you know, it got bad last night and it's worse today. So could, Chuck, could you just remind people about temporary shelter? And the need, I believe you said there's a need for volunteers too.
Yeah, Our Neighbor's Place just opened last night for the season. It rotates between a handful of different churches and they do have volunteers. It's with Erie United Methodist Alliance, Yuma slash Erie.org. I don't know who you guys ended up interviewing from there because you did, you said you interviewed, but the guy that runs their veterans' housing is setting up the volunteering, but they have information for that on the website. Josh?
Yeah, we were required to reach out to veterans and so we did have veteran participation in our stakeholder session.
Yeah. Yeah, it just got started up last night, plenty of opportunities to.
Are they accepting coats and?
Oh, if people want to give coats and blankets. Blizzard of Blankets is this Saturday at ten-twenty-four Peach Street from nine to noon.
My wife asked me to ask.
Yeah, yeah, that's actually, I'm on that board and it's at my church. So I probably should advertise that a little bit better. Yeah, this Saturday from nine to noon, Blizzard of Blankets.
Chuck, tell them the address of the church. You said that, right? Tell them the name of the church, so you said the address, I think, but.
Uh, so for the Blizzard of Blankets, that's at St. Paul's United Church of Christ. Our Neighbor's Place right now is at First Presbyterian Church of the Covenant, like two blocks away from here.
Any other questions?
No, I just.
Oh, I'm sorry, we.
I just have, just have one more.
One more slide.
One more slide, again, just the schedule. Public display period will be November twenty-fifth to December ninth. We're required to put this plan on display for up here to fifteen days. We are also required to have a public hearing regarding the draft plan and that's scheduled for December fifth, as I think we talked about earlier. And then again, we're going to ask council to consider this, approving this plan so we can submit it to HUD before the end of the year at your December twenty-third, uh, twenty-first, twenty-first meeting. And our goal would be to submit this to HUD by December thirtieth. Hit the, hit the submit button to HUD on December thirtieth.
Okay, everybody mark your calendars, so.
Appreciate y'all coming out tonight for this, appreciate.
Thank you.
Listening to this session. We spent a lot of time with a lot of stakeholders and felt that this is a really good, good, good plan that we participated in and thought it was really well-received and a lot of input, a lot of good input from folks locally.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thanks.
Veronica, did you want to say anything? I didn't mean to, okay.
I had a question. So at this point, are you aware of any developers or organizations that plan on doing a large-scale development of affordable housing?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I know you, Hands is very active locally. I don't know what the plans for the Housing Authority are. You know, they always have something they're thinking about doing. And you do have other local developers that come to the table from now and again. I, Deborah, I don't know if you have any specific names locally other than Hands that you've received? Yeah, yeah, but you get, yeah, yeah.
I mean, are you talking in general?
I was just talking about in, in general.
So if Yuma just bought on Gate Street, right next to the Outlet's apartment building, they just bought a spot and they converted a bunch of apartments in the second, third floor to store five, except for Anna's for princes. And then we have a second one versus seven women. They changed, they converted the same, the Holy Rosary into sixteen apartments maybe. There's, there's a handful of stuff along these lines that's happening currently.
And you have some out-of-town developers as well that occasionally come to the city for home dollars, for tax credit projects. I can't, I can't remember the names who comes to, Deb could probably answer that.
I would add, Community Shelter Services is putting in the tiny homes.
Yes.
For families because that is, there is such a shortage for families.
Dolly, with all of the little projects that we have going on, slowly we can start eradicating homelessness in the Erie County area and in our city at least, you know. Little things everywhere in every corner, but slowly.
It's true.
Do we have any part of what's going on at Family First, the little houses with bedrooms?
Yeah, that's what I was confused about. That's why I asked you if it was that one.
No, I don't think so. That's outside the city.
Yeah, that's outside the city, yeah.
All right, study session dismissed, I think.
Thank you, everybody.
I feel like Brown House Day. It's like I wake up, I go to City Hall.